Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Orange County Legislature's Organization Meeting. Today is Thursday, January 6, 2022. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence and a pledge to the flag? And please remember Pine Bush School attended Tim Maines, who recently passed away.
I pledge allegiance.
To the like. States of America. To the Republic. Which is nation. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty, justice, and all.
God bless America.
As we begin, could we have County Clerk Kelly ask you, please administer the oath of office to the entire legislature?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Michael Paduk.
Staganga.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Where?
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
That will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of county legislator.
Of county legislator.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Kelly. Would Deputy Clerk Kelly Bradley please do the roll call?
Emma.
Here.
And Agostakis.
Present.
Ben.
Here.
Benelli.
Present.
Bresha.
Here.
Cheney.
Here.
Ellers.
Here.
Fagion.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Luhon.
Present.
Menuda.
Present.
O'Donnell.
Yeah.
Paduk.
Here.
Ramos.
Here.
Ruskovich.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Sierra.
Here.
Staganga.
Present.
Sutherland.
Here.
Tortell.
Here.
Tui.
Here.
21 present.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, your first order of business today is to elect a chairperson for the year 2022. I will now accept nominations. Legislator Heinz.
Madam Chairwoman, Kevin Heinz.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to place the name of Katie Benelli in as chairwoman of the Orange County Legislature. She came to us, she's in her 12th year as a legislator. So almost 13 years ago, she came to us with executive level experience as a town supervisor in Blooming Grove. She was immediately made a committee chairman upon being elected, which is unusual, but the chairman at the time saw that she was well qualified and ready to jump right in and take that role. And that impressed me, and she's continued to impress, I think, all of us in her service, not only as a committee chair, ultimately the majority leader, and for these past four months in her capacity as chairwoman in the legislature. She is respected by the staff, her colleagues in the legislature, other elected officials, department heads. She brought us through the budget season as chairwoman in great shape, and she's a great leader in these tough times. I think you should all please join me, and let's keep Katie as our chairwoman. Thank you.
Thank you, Legislator Heinz. Do I have a second? Legislator Benton?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'd be honored to second the motion for to have Katie Benelli as our chairwoman for the Orange County Legislature for this year. I remember Katie well before she was a supervisor for the town of Blooming Grove, and the Republican Caucus knows very well that she did and has done a great job as majority leader for the last number of years as well. So I expect her to continue well as our future chairwoman of the Orange County Legislature. And again, it's my honor to second.
Thank you, Legislator Benton. The name of Catherine E. Benelli has been presented as chairperson for the year 2022. Are there any other nominations? There being no other nominations, may I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
So moved.
Go.
Second.
Second, Luhon.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye. Bresha.
I cast one ballot for Catherine E. Benelli as chairwoman of the Orange County Legislature. Do I have a second?
Emma, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye. Bresha.
I cast one ballot for Catherine E. Benelli as chairwoman of the Orange County Legislature. Do I have a second?
Emma, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye. Bresha.
I cast one ballot for Catherine E. Benelli as chairwoman of the Orange County Legislature. Do I have a second?
Emma, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye. Bresha.
Catherine E. Benelli has been elected as chairwoman of the Orange County Legislature for the year 2022. Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you. I now call on Legislator Ruskovich with a statement for majority leader.
Yes, thank you, Jean. I'm happy to announce that the Republican Caucus has unanimously selected Tom Fagion to serve as a majority leader for the coming year. We've all seen what a great job Tom does as legislator. His leadership on the Rules Committee has been exemplary, and we're very looking forward to having him serve as majority leader for coming year. Tom, congratulations.
Thank you, Legislator Ruskovich. I now call on Legislator Tortell for a statement on majority leader. I'm sorry, minority leader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, the Democratic Caucus, have unanimously chosen Legislator Mike Paduk as our minority leader once again. Mike has been, in his 24th year, has been a legislator since 1998, representing the city of Middletown and the town of Walkill. He has fought to reduce taxes, fought for accountability, open access to our legislator and to the public. He's chaired several committees and was the first legislator appointed to serve on the Municipal Parks Program Board. Mike has worked very hard for the people of Orange County, this legislator, and the Democratic Caucus. He has proven himself time and time again as a dedicated leader, even in the most trying of times. Thank you.
Thank you, Legislator Tortell. Would County Clerk?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Mike.
Yes, Legislator. Yes.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make a statement that I've chosen not to be a member of any political party caucus at this point, but rather will have an independent-minded caucus before each legislative session, in which opinions of any colleague, no matter what their party, are always welcome. Thank you.
So noted, Legislator Agostakis.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Michael Amo.
Legislator Amo.
Thank you. As in previous years, the Independence Party that I ran on alone in Orange County as a special party of District 1 elected me unanimously to the legislature on the independence line, although there was not a primary line in the ballot, but there was a party. I still am a blank here, but registered in the Independence Party, which does exist. And so that particular party has indicated, as it had in the past, that I will represent them.
Mr. Amo, we will take this information under advisement. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Legislator O'Donnell.
Legislator O'Donnell, go ahead.
Thank you. As the sole member of the Conservative Party sitting in the 2022 Legislature, I'm proud to represent all the conservatives in Orange County. Thank you.
So noted. Thank you, Legislator O'Donnell. At this time, would County Clerk Kelly ask you, please administer the oath of office to our new chairwoman, Catherine E. Benelli?
Jean, it looks like that froze up.
Yeah, I'm trying to reach out to Carrie Anne.
Okay. You're back up on this one.
Katie, can you hear us?
Can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Yes.
Oh, you can lower them.
Can Kelly, can Kelly give you the oath of office now? Your screen is frozen.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, Kelly.
Aye, Catherine E. Benelli. Do solemnly swear. Support the Constitution of the United States. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of chairwoman. The duties of chairwoman. Of the Orange County Legislature. Supporting to the best of my ability. So help me God. Thank you.
Katie, I'm sorry, but we have an audio issue. Your mic is not on.
Thank you so much, and I guess I shall start again.
That's one.
I have one. Yes, I've already had one earlier today, Mike, so I'll be fair and I'll tell you it's true for me.
Great.
Okay, so 12 years ago, I was here, I was, well, I actually was in this building, but the building didn't look the way it does today, and I was sworn in as a new member of the Orange County Legislature after being serving for 10 years as Blooming Grove Supervisor. I recall being excited, eager, anxious, and to start this new chapter of my life. Throughout my tenure as supervisor and legislator, I've been fortunate to work with and learn from various commissioners, directors, past and present county executives and legislators, department heads, and employees in the government. I'm grateful for the relationships that I have developed over these years in public service with so many dedicated and community-minded individuals. Each of them has taught me in their own way the leadership skills necessary to stand before you today, still excited, still eager, but not as anxious. Thanks to them, I am fully prepared to fulfill the duties of chair. The fact that this legislature is overwhelmingly comprised of incumbents demonstrates to me that despite our differences, we have proven that together we can make great things happen. We can work for the common good even under the most unusual and adverse situations. The challenges we faced over the last few years have been unprecedented. We have all heard the saying, when the going gets tough, the tough get going. That is exactly what we did. I believe it has made us stronger, and the electorate has recognized this. Orange County has a solid record of success, including cutting the county tax rate, having Moody's Bond Reading Agency recognize our responsible financial actions, working with the private sector to create substantial economic opportunities. We have significantly improved our parks and made record investments in law enforcement to protect county residents. We need to maintain this momentum. The upcoming year will continue to be filled with unique challenges as we work together for a healthier world and cope with the ongoing pandemic. The road ahead will not be an easy one. However, I am confident that if we continue to operate as a unified body, we will be successful in keeping Orange County fiscally sound and healthy county for the years to come. I congratulate and welcome all the returning legislature, along with two new members, Genesis Ramos from the city of Newburgh and Glenn Ellers from the Village of Florida, to a new term. I am humbled by the support and confidence this legislative body has afforded me. Please accept my heartfelt gratitude. As your chairwoman, I will continue to collaborate in an atmosphere that is respectful and open to individual and district concerns. I'm a strong believer that respect brings unity, and unity can accomplish great things. An extraordinary public servant, friend, and mentor of mine, the late Senator Bill Larkin, said it best, "There is no I in team." It is my hopes that together with Majority Leader Fagion, Minority Leader Paduk, Legislator Amo, all legislators, and County Executive Newhouse and his team, we will respectfully work together to provide the residents of Orange County a vibrant and safe environment where they can be proud to live, work, and raise their families, because there is no I in team. In closing, I would like to recognize and thank my colleagues and friends, Kevin Heinz and Lee Benton, for the kind words in their respective nominating speeches. I would be remiss if I did not recognize Legislator Clerk Jean Rampin, Deputy Clerk Kelly Bradley, staff members Dorian Griffith and Carrie Anne Hamel, and Legislative Council Betsy Abraham for their extraordinary support, especially over these last few months. Langdon Chapman, our county attorney, Deputy County Executive Harry Poor, and County Executive Steve Newhouse, too, have been more than supportive. And the loves of my life who are always here for me, my husband Joe, daughter Victoria, son-in-law Don, and my pride and joy granddaughter Grace, who has the power to always make me smile, and now she's making me cry. Thank you all. Let's get to work and start the business for 2022.
Katie, we have legislators Menuda, Luhon, and Minority Leader Paduk with their hands raised.
Okay, then. Legislator Menuda, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chairwoman Benelli, and congratulations to all of those. I have a point of order, a question. I don't know if it can be answered today. After some of the dialogue I've heard today, I understand there's a couple of splinter-type things happening here. Those who have been elected under one party yet are choosing not to caucus for others and are planning on having their own independence. I don't know the legalities of that. It seems off to me that they would be elected under one guise and then serve as another. So I would like a point of order and clarification as to those committees, or I'm not even sure what to call them at this point.
I'm going to refer to, because we've had some conversations in the past, so I'm going to refer to Legislative Council Betsy Abraham.
Okay. Good afternoon. At this point, that will have to be something that we'll have to address separately. Currently, for the organization meeting, it is not a matter that is appropriate to be addressed for purposes of this meeting, so it will be something that I can look into and we can address at a later time.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate that. You know, those items should have been discussed prior to this, in my opinion, so as not to, you know, shine it the way it has today. Thank you for your courtesies, and I look forward to resolving that later on.
Thank you, Mr. Menuda. Kelly, and who's next? Minority Leader Paduk. Minority Leader Paduk. Oh, Luhon, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to give a brief congratulatory, Madam Chairwoman, and to all the new legislators and everyone who is coming in, once again, for their term. You know, I was really, you said something in your speech about respect, and I really truly want to say, over the last four months, you have truly shown respect and dedication, and it has been a pleasure to work with you these last four years. But truly, I'm excited to see a chair that I feel we can all look up to and work with in a bipartisan fashion. So I want to thank you for all your hard work, and I look forward to working with you the next four years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Legislator Luhon, for the kind words. And I believe up next is Minority Leader Paduk. Am I correct, Kelly?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kevin Darian actually stole most of my words. I wanted to congratulate you and thank you for being so open-minded when I called. You returned my calls. No matter what I've asked you to talk about, you've been very open with me, discussing, and we'll discuss it further today in regards to public participation at our meetings, et cetera. But I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the minority, that working together is one of the most important things we should be doing as a legislature. I look forward to your leadership. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, sir. Do we have any other comments?
No, we don't.
Okay, then I guess we're, I think we're going to get started with item number one. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Legislator Fagion, resolution appointing clerk of the county legislature pursuant to Section 2.06 of the County Charter of the County of Orange, Local Number 8 of the year 1968.
Questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. This is a roll call vote. But before that, I would just like to personally thank our clerk, who has worked alongside us throughout these four years of our past term with such grace and ease, and really guided us through some very, very difficult times. And quite frankly, without her support and expertise, I really don't know where we all would have been. So I think we all owe her a great deal of gratitude, and I'm very happy to see this resolution appointing her, again, to serve as, in the position of clerk to the legislature. I see that. Majority Leader Fagion's hand is raised.
And also Minority Leader Paduk.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations to you, and it's always a pleasure to work with you. I just would like to take a moment and to ask all my colleagues, and as one of my first official duties here as majority leader, which I take with great respect and pride, it is my pleasure to put this resolution forward, and I ask that all my colleagues across the aisle, whatever aisles, please join in and affirming the resolution here supporting Jean. Jean has been a truly monster of a person in our office in a great way, and she has carried the burden for us so many times, and we are so lucky to have her and our staff there. And it's my pleasure to sponsor this resolution, and I expect this to go 21-0. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Minority Leader Paduk.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to ask that the Democratic Caucus be added to the resolution as sponsors. And I'd just like to thank Jean personally. Anytime I've called or talked, actually, not even had the call, but have been reminded by Jean on some certain things, and her staff have done an outstanding job for us. I've been here a long time and been through a couple of different clerks, and everyone's done an outstanding job, and I'm so grateful that we have such an office that we can work with to make sure that our job gets done very well. So thank you, Jean. Congratulations. I think you have everyone's support, and I look forward to working with you and your office staff throughout the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I also see.
Mike connected.
And Michael Amo as well.
Okay, right.
Jimmy O'Donnell.
Okay, Legislator Agostakis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, congratulations on your position, and I also want to congratulate Mr. Fagion and Mr. Paduk. And I support Jean 1,000%. She is just a wonderful person. I am honored to support her. And since I am not a member of any political caucus, I will ask that I also get included as sponsor on this resolution. Thank you very much.
So thank you. So noted. Thank you. Mr. Amo?
Yes.
You're muted.
Start the year right. Thanks, Mike. Thank you. I also want to, I also want to just add my congratulations to Jean. You know, we've worked there for a long time, and she just does such a well-organized, flawless job. Seamless is probably a better way to describe it, and I really look forward to working with her, and I, too, would like to be added to the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Jimmy O'Donnell.
Hey, my name is a sponsor. Congratulations, Jean. Keep up the great work. You do a great job for us and all the residents of Orange County. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Well said. Thank you, Legislator O'Donnell. Okay, are there any other comments? Then let's, this is a roll call vote, so please call the roll, Jean.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? And Agostakis?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Bresha?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Ellers?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Luhon?
Yes.
Menuda?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Ruskovich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
Yes.
Staganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Tortell?
Yes.
Tui?
Aye.
Yes.
21 ayes. And I thank all of you. I'm looking forward to the next term with all of you. I respect you, and I thank you all so much. You're great to work with.
Welcome.
Thank you, Jean. All right, item number two.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Legislator Fagion, resolution adopting the Legislative Manual for the County of Orange and the Rules of Order and Procedure for the Orange County Legislature, as previously amended pursuant to Section 2.02A of the Orange County Charter, Section 153 of County Law, and Article 2, C1E, Article 3, introduction, and Article 4E, 1A and B of said Legislative Manual.
Second.
Questions or comments? Right, hearing none. Would you please call the roll, Jean?
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
And Agostakis?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Bresha?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Ellers?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Luhon?
Yes.
Menuda?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Ruskovich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
Yes.
Staganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Tortell?
Yes.
Tui?
Aye.
And Ellers?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Luhon?
Yes.
Menuda?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Ruskovich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
Yes.
Staganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
not just in America, but around the world. And in doing so, the continuity of government and the fact that we do meet is of the utmost importance. That being said, I would like to make this resolution to establish our calendar for the year 2022 to include the following. The April meeting of the Orange County Legislature to commence at 10:00 a.m. and the June meeting of the Orange County Legislature to commence at 7:00 p.m. All other monthly legislative meetings will commence at 3:30 p.m. And it's the resolution that I bring forward, and I ask that you all consider, and please vote on that in the affirmative. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just want to refer to legal counsel right now. The amendment that we are, have been presented in our packet states 3:30 meetings for all meetings except for the April 8th meeting, which is youth and government at 10:00 a.m. So, my question is to Majority Leader Fagion, are you asking to amend that schedule to include June 2nd as 7:00 p.m.?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would ask that we would change the June meeting from 3:30 and make that 7:00 p.m.
Okay, so you're making that motion. Okay, thank you, Mr. Anagastakis. She didn't even let me get the words out. Okay, so now that that, are there any discussions on the amendment? And I would recognize Minority Leader Paduk.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually surprised to hear that. I'm happy to hear it. But what I'll just say, like I try to talk about every year, government is supposed to be about transparency. And I know everybody says that, you know, 3:30, we've had a lot of people come. We don't really get many people at 7 o'clock. But quite frankly, with all the resolutions that we received before this meeting, there's been, in the last eight years, there's been an average of at least two. There were two years or one year that we had none. But my opinion is, two is at least each half of the year. One in June, it's okay. But the fact is, is I'm going to make a motion that we add October as a 7 o'clock meeting as well. If I could amend Tom's resolution, I don't know if he'd be okay with that. But I think it's important that we, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to, to get your question answered by legal counsel. That's all. So, finish your sentence. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, my concern is that we should stick with at least two meetings per year. You know, I'd like to have a lot more than that. We've talked about this for 24 years. I've talked about this. And I think it's imperative and important that the residents in Orange County can have the opportunity to come. A lot can't come at 3:30. And I know everybody says it's issue-driven. But the fact is, issue-driven or not, 7 o'clock is more an appropriate time to let people come and talk with their full legislature. So, my motion to amend it again, to add October as well as a 7 o'clock meeting, I guess you're gonna, we need the counsel if that's what you wanted to do, Madam Chair. But I'd like to amend Tom's motion if I can, or I'd make my own motion to make the June and the October meeting at 7:00 p.m.
All right, I'm going to ask legisla, oh, legislator. Legislative Counsel Abraham to clarify, because I do not believe that we can have an amendment on top of another amendment that hasn't even been voted on. So, if I could ask for some guidance, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So, the main motion that we have right now is Majority Leader Fagion's motion to amend the resolution to include the June 2nd, 2022 session to be moved to 7:00 p.m. It's my understanding, and correct me, Minority Leader Paduk, that you are seeking to amend that motion to include also moving the, did you say the October?
October, yes, that's correct.
The October 6, 2022 annual meeting to 7:00 p.m. as well. Is that, is that correct, Minority Leader?
That's correct as well, yeah.
Okay. All right, so, so in order to do that, that you can move forward with a motion to amend the main motion. A vote will have to be taken on Minority Leader Paduk's motion first, depending on how that moves forward. Then either, i-if it's an affirmative for both, then there's no need to address the main motion again. If it, if it moves into the, i-if it does not pass, if the motion fails, then we can address Majority Leader Fagion's motion as it was made. Is that clear?
Thank you for the clarification. Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Hopefully, it's clear to everyone else. So, at this point, I'm sure there may be some comments on the amendment, the amended amendment. If I'm saying it correctly.
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Point of order, Madam Chair? Yes, just give me a moment, Lori. I do have some hands raised, so I'm going to ask Kelly Bradley, because I didn't see all of them. So, if you could just give me the names, Kelly, I'd appreciate it, and we'll get everybody in.
I have a Legislator Menuda, Legislator Tortell, and Minority Leader Paduk with their hands raised.
I apologize. Madam Chair, may I just clarify something first? There has to be a second to Minority Leader Paduk's motion. And I'm not sure if there was a second made.
There wasn't one yet.
Okay.
That was my point of order. I will second Legislator Minority Leader Paduk's motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's not a point of order. It's a second of his motion. Thank you, Legislator Tortell. All right, Legislator Menuda.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Is this discussion time?
Yes, it is.
On motion? Excellent.
On the motion to amend the amendment.
Thank you. Yes, I have, you know, having heard the body of information, obviously, 24 years, this has been the same thing for 24 years. Nothing has changed. Nothing has needed to change. We have seen the night meetings are not more attended than our regular meetings. In fact, when there are issues, we have full attendance. In fact, we have more than full attendance. Sometimes you're sitting in the hallway. As a fiscal conservative, I am also concerned about the cost and expense of having this just to have it. We have additional security. We have others that need to stay late. Those are incurred additional costs for something that we've not seen the benefit of. I like to see outcomes. I don't see a positive outcome in something that's been requested for 24 years, has never been happening. And now we're going to raise it again just to have speaking points. I would like to revert back to Mr. Legislator Fagion's initial request here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in regard to the issue on the floor right now?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, so having said that, we're going to call the rolls.
Legislator Luhan just raised his hand.
Oh, okay. Legislator Luhan, please feel free to go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While I recognize Legislator Menuda's point about, you know, it being, it seeming very much the same. The reality is, across Orange County, we have individuals who are coming out of work precisely at that time. And we could, if we were promoting it better for that nightly meeting, we could end up seeing a lot more people showing up for this kind of meeting, particularly when it's such an important meeting like the October meeting. I think that it's not so much that we've been doing it for 24 years and it hasn't worked. It's perhaps that we've been doing it for 24 years, and we could have been doing it a little bit better or doing it a little bit differently. And so, this has been a conversation about whether it's better to do at 3:30, whether it's do at 7:00. Look, I think that we all agree that at the end of the day, we want our constituents to be able to have a voice. And giving them the option and giving them different options to be able to attend is the utmost importance to us. I think that there is no argument here necessarily about, about that. We are only requesting an additional evening meeting, which we feel is fair and respectful to the constituents of Orange County. And I know that every single one of you cares about the voices of Orange County. So, I do hope that you will consider the voices of Orange County, your constituents, those that have voted for you to be in the positions that you are, and that together, in a bipartisan fashion, that we vote in favor of this resolution, which is both supporting Majority Leader Fagion's post and also the minority leaders. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Legislator Luhan. Are there any other hands raised? I don't see any, Kelly.
No, no more.
Okay, so let's end for clarification purposes. The vote is on amending both June 2nd and October 6th to have moved from 3:30 to 7 o'clock on the resolution. Is that clear to everyone? All right, then, would you call the roll, Jean, please?
Fagion?
No.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo? Anagastakis?
No.
Benton?
No.
Breschah?
No.
Cheney?
No.
Ellers?
No.
Hines?
No.
Luhan?
Aye.
Menuda?
No.
O'Donnell?
No.
Ramos?
Yes.
Ryskevich?
No.
Sassy?
No.
Sierra?
Aye.
Stiganga? No. Sutherland?
No.
Tortell?
Yes.
Tui?
No.
Benelli?
No.
Six ayes, 15 noes. Motion fails.
All right, now we're going to revert back to the other motion. Is that?
Madam Chairwoman? Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
When I voted, when I voted on that, when I voted no, but I noticed that after my mic had been muted, so it may have sounded like I didn't, I gave a y. So, I was not a yes if she had me as a yes. I was a no.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, Legislator Counsel, am I correct? And now we will vote on the, without any further discussion, let's vote on the other amendment, which is only the amendment to the June 2nd, 2022 meeting for 7 o'clock.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. Jean, would you mind calling the roll for this one, please?
Sure. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo?
Yes.
Anagastakis?
Yes.
Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers?
Yes.
Hines? Luhan? Menuda?
Aye.
O'Donnell? Ramos?
Yes.
Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland?
Yes.
Tortell? Tui? Benelli? 21 ayes. Motion passes.
All right, thank you. The next few resolutions are actually received, they're not actually, they're designations for the newspapers. They all will be received and filed. But before I go to that, I just want to note that I'm going to call upon Majority Leader Fagion, because it has been brought to my attention, as well as the clerk's attention from Legislator O'Donnell, that the Goshen Independent should be added to our list. So, at this point, I'm going to refer to Majority Leader Fagion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a motion to add the Goshen Independent newspaper to Agenda Items Number Four, Number Six, and to amend Agenda Item Number Eight to include the Goshen Independent in the resolution. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, Menuda.
Thank you, Legislator Menuda. And Legislative Counsel, we have to vote on that, correct? Or not?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself. Yes, there has to be a vote taken.
Any discussion on this amendment? Minority Leader Paduk, I see your hands raised, but I'm not too sure if it's on this issue.
It isn't, Madam Chair. I'd like to have, make a comment, though, after we finish this roll.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments on this issue? All right, then, I'm going to ask to call the roll. I'm sorry, did I hear Mr. Aimo?
Yes, yes. Just a clarification. This is reference to the two political parties, Republicans, Democrats, newspapers, am I correct?
That is correct.
So, in this vote, is it appropriate for myself and Mr. O'Donnell to abstain?
On this particular, well, let me ask you. That's a good question. You always come up with good questions. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to refer to Counsel again. You're wording your money today, buddy.
Well, if, you know, I can't, I can't tell you one way or the other whether you should or should not abstain. That's a matter of personal preference. Abstentions are generally left for if there is, you know, some interest that you have in the decision that will ultimately be reached. So, it, in this situation, I'd say it's a matter of preference for yourself and Legislator O'Donnell.
Yep, Madam Chair, maybe just clarify, Betsy Farmby. I was, I was already, I was sort of asked, I was asking the question, since we're not members of the affected parties, do we have a vote?
You have a vote. You will not be able to sign the designation as required by law, because that, that is required to be signed by members of the party designating those official newspapers. So, but that does not bar you from voting.
Thank you. That was my question.
You're welcome.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to call. And just, just remember that this is on the two, Number Four and Number Six, which are the Republican Party designations. And Number Eight, that we're all voting on together in regard to everything that was included and discussed by the two parties. So, just for clarification, so this vote is on the amendments only or the additions and amendment. So, Jean, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo?
Yes.
Anagastakis? Benton? Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tortell? Tui? Benelli? 21 ayes.
So, now we will go back to Number Four.
Designation by members of the county legislature representing the Republican Party of newspapers to publish the concurrent resolutions of the state legislature and election notices to be published in 2022 pursuant to Section 214 of the county law.
This is received and filed.
King, Legislator Tortell has her hand raised.
Legislator Tortell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question. Since we are remote and will be remote for the next two months or so, will we be able to submit electronic signatures for those documents that we normally sign at our organizational meeting? Or do we need to come to the office to sign them?
Lori, these are some of the questions that we have been researching over the last few days. I don't think a final decision has been made on that as of yet. We are looking into it. But right now, what we do need on these, because if you recall, when we're all together and we do this, the Republicans sign their sheet and the Dems sign their sheet. And as long, but I've been advised, and please, Counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, as long as we have a majority of the party signing those sheets, we're good to go. It doesn't necessarily mean that every single legislature would have to assign. So, we would have to ask you once again to try to get in here. And those are some of the discussions we are in the, in the process of having as we move forward, because of the likelihood we may be operating like this more often than not. So, thank you for raising the question.
Thank you.
Number Five.
Designation by members of the county legislature representing the Democratic Party of newspapers to publish the concurrent resolutions of the state legislature and election notices to be published in 2022 pursuant to Section 214 of the county law.
Second.
Received and filed. Number Six.
Designation by members of the county legislature representing the Republican Party of newspapers to publish all local laws, notices, and other matters required by law to be published in 2022 pursuant to Subdivision Two of Section 214 of county law.
Second.
Received and filed. Number Seven.
Designation by members of the county legislature representing the Democratic Party of newspaper to publish all local laws, notices, and other matters required by law to be published in 2022 pursuant to Subdivision Two of Section 214 of the county law.
Second.
This is also received and filed. Number Eight.
Legislator Fagion, resolution designating newspapers published within the county as official newspapers for the publication of all local laws, notices, and other matters required by law to be published in 2022 pursuant to Subdivision Two of Section 214 of the county law. And this resolution would be as amended.
Okay, thank you. Any comments on this resolution? Right, hearing none, I would ask that the roll be called.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo?
Yes.
Anagastakis? Benton? Breschah?
Abstain.
Benton, one abstention. Breschah? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tortell? Tui? Benelli? 20 ayes, one abstention, and the desk is clear, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you very, very much. And I wanted to take the opportunity to, again, thank all of you and look forward to a very healthy and successful 2022. I did see some hands raised, so I will stop speaking at this point. I, I see Minority Leader Paduk, but I think there was one other one. So, Kelly, if you can chat. Minority Leader?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, earlier today, we talked about meeting dates, et cetera, et cetera. And we've all been, I think, pretty concerned about not having public parta-, uh, participation while we're meeting virtu-, virtually. We've been working on this for two years, I'll remind you. Today, I had a discussion, uh, with Mr. Burpo regarding this issue. He told me that they are waiting on the echo stabilizer to fix the echo in the chamber, and that, uh, an update would allow the public access, uh, like we have at past public hearings. If he's been at any public hearing, the public can access them and discuss at the public hearing their issues. He's working to make that happen, uh, through all the, uh, however they do that. Um, but he also told me he thought everything would be, uh, completed for our February meeting. So I'll take his word on it for now. I'm gonna check on him every single week from now on, just to make sure that they're working on it. And I did mention, because I had this discussion, uh, with the chairwoman, regarding when they need to get into our legislative chambers, that they have to get permission from our staff. And in fact, if they need to get in, instead of the ADAs or whoever wants to meet in there, we take priority. So hopefully this will all get done, um, like he says, as quickly as possible, and possibly before the, uh, February meetings. One other comment, uh, there was a comment made about fiscal, uh, conservat-, conservatives, being a fiscal conservative. Well, in fact, if you're a fiscal conservative, that happens all year, whether it's, uh, budget time, whenever it is. So when you talk about that, you shouldn't use it as a speaking point. Just, so I wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Let's, let's, let's refrain from attacking other legislators, okay?
I wasn't attacking, it's just...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate that.
Okay. Uh, are there any other comments? Well, again, I, I also do want to add that comment of Minority Leader Paduk. Uh, it is something that is, as you know, is a priority of mine, and as a matter of fact, we even put additional money in the legislative budget, in order to be able to get us up and running. Uh, I have been assured, as you have, that certain things are here. They have said February 1st. They said that to us for a while. And I think between myself and you and Majority Leader Fagion, who has also been in pretty close contact with Commissioner Burpo, uh, hopefully we can see this started, because I, unfortunately, I do believe that we're, we're going to be doing the big people's business again via Microsoft Teams. So, there's a little plug for them. But thank you all, and thank you from the bottom of my heart and sincerity for all the support, especially over these last few months. And in the coming months ahead, it should be a fun ride. Thank you all again. Have a lovely evening and be safe.
Thank you.
You too.
Goodbye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.